Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the rights worshipful Lord Mayor of Sheffield councillor Gail Smith.
Please be seated. I have been elected, sorry, appointed to the office of Lord Mayor of the city of Sheffield. Hereby declare, I take that office upon myself and unduly and faithfully fulfil the duties of the according to the best of my judgement and my ability, I undertake to observe, sorry, the code of conduct that is expected of members of Sheffield City Council. Thank you. I call upon David Barker to move a vote of thanks to the retiring Lord Mayor councillor Tony Dowling.
My Lord Mayor, Consort, distinguished guests, fellow councillors and ladies and gentlemen, I tell will remain seated, not for Covid, it's my knees, I'm afraid, but it really is a great honour and personal pleasure to be able to propose the vote of thanks to the retiring Lord Mayor and Lady Mayress, Tony and Val. Now, you won't know this, but two years ago, when Tony and Val had been investigated, two years ago when Tony and Val were being invested as Lord Mayor and Lady Mayress, I was actually set to give the proposing speech. On that occasion, the people of Mosborough showed you mercy. You are now about to find out just how merciful they were. A chief exec, you can check this if you like, but I'm pretty sure the constitution states that as Lord Mayor has had two years in office, I get double the amount of time to propose his thanks. So I better crack on because I think I've only got four hours of battery life left on my computer. Don't, don't worry, I haven't been away long enough to have forgotten how a room of councillors can turn on you when you keep them from a free buffet, so I'm not going to go on all day. In fact, when I was writing this last night, I actually found it quite difficult. I mean firstly, it was really difficult not to make this a personal thank you to Tony and Val from me, because having worked with Tony as an incredible ward colleague, and having had Tony and Val as great friends and supportive friends for a number of years, it would have been really easy just to make this a personal thank you from me to them. And I know, I know that wouldn't be appropriate, so I won't be doing that, but it would have been very easy to go on those lines. The second reason it was difficult was because normally this comes at the end of what's been a fantastic year, and there are wonderful, great events fresh in your mind of Lord Mayor and Lady Mayress that we can involve with. Well, this is the end of the second year, I think that's the year that most of us would want to move on from and forget. But even in respect to the second year, I think I can still say, wait for it, didn't they zoom well? Wait, okay, you don't like the jokes, maybe the interpretive dance later on will win you back, we'll see how that goes. But I think in proposing these sites, it really is important to remember that before being invested, Tony and Val undertook more engagements as deputies than any other deputies in the history of this city, in fact, as many as some Lord Mayors undertook. They then served an incredible first year as first citizens of this city, doing some incredible things, and then subsequently agreed without question to serve for a second and incredibly difficult year as Lord Mayor, and help us through unique and awful times. And I really didn't think when I was proposing thanks to Tony and Val that it was unique and awful, but they're the times we're in. And as many people know, the only other person in history to have served two terms as Lord Mayor of Sheffield was in fact the Duke of Norfolk, so that this is a really historic day. And I did a little bit of research and found that Tony actually has more in common with the Duke of Norfolk than that. I mean firstly, obviously, they were both born in the reign of Queen Victoria, which is, secondly, neither of them attended Oxford or Cambridge, and thirdly, and finally, and I might need to check this, but I'm pretty sure it were both bus drivers, which is quite incredible. But despite the last year, the first year, there were some incredible highlights for the two of them. And I know that Tony will probably want to touch on this, so I'm not going to go in there. But I know one thing that perhaps even made their year, we'd be going to Bramall Lane, wouldn't it, Tony and Val? I know how often you've said how much you're looking forward to getting back there. But seriously, I think something that really sums up their time in office was something as simple as a Lord Mayor's Christmas card. Because being Lord Mayor, and Gail will be feeling this now, it's a significant personal achievement, one that makes you personally very proud. But what Tony and Val have done over their time is take every opportunity to share that honour with the wider community. And a great example of that was that they put the design of the Lord Mayor's Christmas card, the subject of a competition for local schoolchildren. Local kids actually got to design the Lord Mayor's official card. So what a wonderful way to keep the community involved in your good fortune, in your great year, and allow them to share in that. And that was just typical of the way that you acted as Lord and Lady Mayress, and it was a wonderful thing to see for this city. Now, I did have some really funny stories, so I was going to bring in now, and then I remembered that there's generally a senior police officer at this meeting, so I'm going to give those a miss, just skip on, probably best for all concern. And now UKIP aren't in the room, I think there's one of their phrases that I have got to bring back this afternoon, and that is that for a non-indigenous Sheffielder, Tony is one of the most Sheffield people that I have ever met. And I say that because as a born and bred Sheffielder, being Sheffield for me is about being caring, about caring for your family, caring about your community, and caring about the city. Now, I could have summed that up as just caring about people, but I'm not on a time limit, so I didn't. But Tony and Val have that care for people in absolute abundance. And I know in this room, I'm preaching to the converted, but if more people shared that level of care, just think what the world could look like. Now, the other Sheffieldness that they possess in abundance is not going on or shouting about it, but getting on and doing it. And I know an example of that through this, without shouting about it, they've raised around £50,000 for wonderful causes in this city, absolutely tremendous, absolutely tremendous. Now, I was disappointed not to be able to propose Tony and Val previously, because there was just one piece of advice that I wanted to give them, and that advice would have been that to be wonderful first citizens of this city, what they really needed to do was to be Tony and Val. And they didn't need that advice, because they clearly did that, and they've been an absolute credit to themselves, to the family, to the community, and to Sheffield. For three years, they've given exemplary service to the office of Lord Mayor. They've involved, they've engaged, they've brought joy, and they've brought honour. And so it's an absolute honour for me to propose a massive, well-deserved vote of thanks to the retiring Lord Mayor and Lady Mayress, Tony and Val. Thank you.
I call upon councillor Roger Davidson, who will second the motion.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I too would like to congratulate Tony on his two unusual records, that of the longest-serving Lord Mayor, apart from the Duke of Norfolk, and secondly, the one as Deputy Lord Mayor, he carried out the most engagements in that particular office. Now, Tony is originally from Devon, a journey that many from the north would dream of going in the opposite direction. It was the pull of a Sheffield girl that made him swap the cream teas of Devon for the irresistible toasted picles of Sheffield. Now, Tony worked for South Yorkshire Transport for 32 years, and is one of the few who can claim to have driven a bendy bus around the Sheffield city centre. Everyone knows of the gregarious nature of buses, they tend to travel in convoys of three, oh, there is a mathematical reason for this. Now, those who have heard of the Bob Newhart School of Comedic Bus Drivers, Tony didn't belong to that. Tony belonged to the Flanders and Swan poetic embrace of the magnificent omnibus, where fares were secondary to the experience of being driven to our destinations by such works of art. Tony became a councillor in the second decade of the millennium and quickly made his mark. Actually, I remember going with him on an inspection of hospital culinary delights as a member of the health scrutiny board. We were given free range of the kitchens and the wards where the food met its final destination. In 2019, as we know, Tony became Lord Mayor and brought dignity to the office, which demonstrated how the role should be carried out. The Lord Mayor is an ambassador for the city, and though there is no executive power, there's certainly influence. A visit from the Lord Mayor is one that makes the day of many, whether they are young school pupils, or have had a difficult life, or have a sense of wonder and a pride in what they have done or achieved. Tony had a close affiliation with the Sea Cadets, for whom the tidal waters of this great city are a little more remote. But Tony was present at the naming of the HMS Sheffield. His recognition of the sacrifices made by the armed services is a proud one, and that recognition is important to those either in the reserves or in full-time service. Tony attended the Invictus Games, where he met Prince Harry, and saw the incredible resilience of those that had received horrendous injuries and yet were able to achieve high levels of sporting prowess. No one can deny meeting those in high office, whether local, national, or meeting gold medal Olympians, as well as others in the limelight through other activities, is exciting. But also meeting the unsung heroes in other walks of life, those that are helping others without the expectation of reward, that is also exciting. People that are attempting to turn people's lives around, that have fallen into bad times or bad habits. Tony visited the Ben Centre, the Archer Project, St Wolford's Day Centre and Homeless Unit, amongst many others. His calmness at the Tiller and fairness when chairing council debates brought respect from all sides. Unfortunately, this year has been a double whammy for Tony, the pandemic and seeing his beloved Sheffield Wednesday relegated. But there is always a silver lining, always a silver lining. As Tony has said, the pandemic has shown a wonderful side of the community, as they are united to help each other, and showed the usual sense of humour that sees us through any crisis. But what about the football teams, both having been relegated? Oh, well, there's always another season. Well done, Tony, and I hope that you and your wife will have many happy years to look back on. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Roger Davidson. I call upon the members of the council to vote by a show of hands, please. I think that's unanimous. Thank you, Tony. So they're going to do it themselves, but I'm going to... Okay. So I can't do this formally, so I'm going to say, Tony, thank you for all you've done, and can I ask you to put your own badge on as retiring Lord Mayor? And Val, could you do the same, please? Thank you. Thank you for that. Tony, I'm now going to give you the opportunity to respond.
Thank you. I think I'll stand down. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and members of the council. My Lord Mayor, Consort, Lord Lieutenant, High Sheriff, Master and Mrs Scutler, Reverend, distinguished guest, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen. It has been an absolute honour and privilege to serve this great city of Sheffield as the 123rd Lord Mayor, and on behalf of the Lady Mayress and myself, I would like to thank everyone who has supported us throughout and over the last two years. I must also thank my council colleagues for giving me that opportunity, and I sincerely hope that I have justified your confidence in me. I have mentioned the last two years as it has been unique insofar as due to the pandemic, it has been my pleasure and privilege to represent our great city of Sheffield for a further 12 months. The first Lord Mayor to have held this high office, but I believe since the Duke of Norfolk in 1897 has already been mentioned. What a wonderful time we have had, we have done so much and met so many lovely people from all walks of life, and hospitality we have received has been truly phenomenal. We have visited places that we wouldn't have had the chance to before, but it's not until you become Lord Mayor that you realise how little you know about the city. People have asked me quite often, what is the best and worst thing you have done as a Lord Mayor? I struggle to find anything that I have not enjoyed, perhaps chairing the council meeting once a month, that can sometimes be challenging, as previous Lord Mayors will conquer. However, the best things have been in abundance. Meeting with children at their school, or conducting a visit of the Lord Mayor's Parlor and the wider town hall, and over a number of years, sorry, two pages too long, and of course, the wonderful change of office that represents so much history always attracts. And I have never tired, and it has always given me much pleasure answering questions about all that it does represent. And questions like, do you have lots of money? Do you live here? The Lady Mayress was once asked if she was Queen and I am the Prime Minister. But among all the innocents, young people on the school council are interested in what happens in the council chamber, and we shouldn't forget that. We have visited hospitals, nursing homes, people celebrating 100th birthdays, homeless charities, factories such as Boeing, McLaren, and Rolls Royce, both of our brilliant universities, and I was privileged to be at the announcement of the brand new warship, a type 22 frigate anti-submarine vessel, to be named HMS Sheffield, and I'm proud to be part of the association of that, to replace the D80 that was sunk during the Falklands campaign in 1982. Over a number of years, Sheffield has become a great multicultural city with many diverse communities, and during our time, we have visited many of these communities. I have to say that wherever we have been across the city, the welcome has always been the same, warm and friendly, and it is truly amazing how much people of Sheffield appreciate the Lord Mayor paying them a visit. I was honoured to open the Invictus Games trials that were held in Sheffield during the summer of 2020. What an amazing event for our disabled servicemen and women, and how they have overcome living with such horrendous injuries, and the service to our country and the support they receive. The Sheffield Arena was packed to the rafters, and you could have heard a pin drop. So much respect, I was almost moved to tears, and indeed, lots were. I do have to thank the civic office and Kate Sheldon, who worked so hard to make sure this event operated like clockwork. We have also met several members of the royal family, although sad to say, not Her Majesty the Queen. Turning to my charities, Weston Park Teenage Cancer Trust, the Sheffield Children's Hospital, and the Sheffield Sea Cadets, they have all been amazing, and I am pleased to announce that we have raised £43,696.29 for these well-deserved charities. During our time, we have carried out literally hundreds, if not thousands, of civic engagements, and I would like to pay tribute to the many volunteers and community groups we have met during our time in office, without whose commitment and dedication Sheffield would be in a much poorer place. I would now like to offer, on behalf of the Lady Mayress and myself, to all the staff who work behind the scenes, making sure that we were able to fulfil our duties, everyone in the catering team for looking after us, and our guests providing a first-class service, reception in front of house staff always offering a smile and a welcome. The mayoral team, Bob, Carl, Roland, and Eric, for keeping the limousine clean and getting us to civic events on time and safely. Julie Wilson, the mace bearer, her help and assistance, advice and guidance has been exceptional always, making sure we have felt it was done properly and following protocol. To Kate, Helen, Veronica, Adil, for going the extra mile, ensuring we were well-informed and equipped to carry out our brilliant engagements, you have all been brilliant. Finally, to my wonderful family and friends, who without their continued help and support, this wonderful experience and opportunity would not have been possible. Before I finish, I must pay tribute to all NHS staff, care workers, and frontline staff who have been so dedicated during this last year and the pandemic. I am so proud of all of you, thank you for being there for us and taking care of us and putting yourselves and that of your own family's lives in danger. My Lord Mayor, I hope and trust that you have as great a year as I have. Can I thank you for being my deputy for the past two years, and to all the officers of the council for putting up with me? Thank you very much.
Hello? For those of you who have got this piece of paper, you'll notice I missed my speech, so I'm going to do it now. I do apologise. I did bring my glasses, but they're in the room up those stairs, so never mind. I'd like to say thank you to councillor Dowling and the lady mayress, retiring. Thank you for holding the fort, Tony, for two years, because if you hadn't agreed to do that, I wouldn't be here today, and I wouldn't have this opportunity to use my year as Lord Mayor in the way I want. So today, I was going to say, I stand before you, but I'll say I'm sitting here. Today, I sit here before you, my family, my friends, and distinguished guests. I feel humbled and enormously proud to be the Lord Mayor of Sheffield and the first citizen of our great city. Sheffield has been my home, the place I was born, and the place I intend to live for the rest of my life. I would like also, at this point, to thank my Liberal Democrat colleagues for giving me this opportunity, so thank you. Thank you councillor Shefak Mohammed for that wonderful speech. However, I am the seventh sibling of the family, not the fourth, but that's okay. Thank you to councillor Tony Dams for your kind words. Tony and I have known each other, as he says, a long time, and my first day in my first council meeting, after winning a by-election, I was not, I didn't feel welcome. But the one person that came up to me in the council chamber with such kindness was councillor Dams, and it's took me 30 years to say thank you for that. To my friends and family who cannot be with us here today, I'm sure we will get together later in the year, and we will then have the opportunity to celebrate. I have family that are no longer with us, and I want to remember them today. My two brothers, Geoffrey and Gerald, my parents and my in-laws, all of them supported and encouraged me in my life in politics over many, many years. And without them and their support, I wouldn't be here today. I was born in Hamsworth, the youngest of seven children. I often think that this is one of the reasons I've had a career in politics. Being heard in my house was never easy. I loved to listen to my older brothers and sisters debating sat around the table with my father, it was a scene I often saw as a child. Being the youngest gives you a great advantage. I had no choice but watch and listen. However, I doubt my siblings would agree, because they always said I never shut up. In my year as Lord Mayor, I will be very much a family affair. Stephen and I are proud to have two wonderful daughters, who will be supporting us in our role this year, along with other members of our family. I first came onto the council in 1992 and became the 10th Liberal Democrat on the council. I represented the Brightside Ward after winning a by-election, a shock to the Labour Party, but more of a shock to me. Winning Brightside, that was the safest seat in South Yorkshire for the Labour Party, was an inspiration and a shock. This meant that we could win any seat in Sheffield, and in just eight short years, we took control of the council for the first time. I have had many roles here on the council, from Chair of Licensing, Chair of Leisure, Chair of Environment, Chair and Cabinet Member for Health and Social Care. I represented the South Yorkshire Fire and Rescue, and I was on the Police Authority. I have served in the Norton Ward, and this is my third term in Mosborough. So 16 years as a councillor over 30 years. During the years I was not a councillor, I retrained myself to become a sherupodist. I didn't waste any time finding other projects, I set up a charity for young people with learning disabilities, to raise funds so that we could help them to do all the things that we all take for granted, and I'm pleased to say that some of them are here with us today. My charities then, my first charity for the year is the Salvation Army, my mother's favourite charity. My mother always said to me, if you never give to any other charity, give to the Salvation Army, they looked after your grandad in the First War, and all those people since. The other reason, sorry, I'm getting a bit emotional, the other reason is my chaplain for my year as Lord Mayor, Ryan Wilmun, a young man who worked so hard in my community. He is sponsored by the Salvation Army, he is an excellent, hard-working young person. Ryan set up a food bank on the Westfield Estate, the thing that he's achieved more than anything is bringing all the professionals together to work together in that community, and I thank him for that. My second charity for this year will be the NHS Trust. I've worked in the NHS, been a patient, I'm thankful for all the hard- I've worked in the NHS, been a patient, I'm thankful for all the hard work they do, not just during the last 18 months of this pandemic, for every working day. I'm sure there's no one here who has not been grateful for the care we have all had and we all take for granted. The NHS is the best in the world and over the last year, if we didn't know before, we all know now. My third charity and the one that is close to my heart is Friends of High Fives, a charity we set up in 2012. We support young people with learning disability in a youth club setting. If I were to describe the work that we do, I would say we are one big happy family. Our aim is and will always be to encourage young people with disabilities to have fun and experience what we all take for granted, empowering them to achieve. My only regret is that I didn't find them earlier in my life. The kids call me Matron because I'm the oldest member of the group. I went to visit this group as a local councillor to explain how voting works, what the council does. I met some amazing young people and I've been going there ever since. They have such pure honesty, like, have you had a busy day or did you just forget to brush your hair? They certainly keep my feet on the ground, they are wonderful young people and I've worked with them now for nine years and I don't think they're going to get rid of me anytime soon. In my year of office, I think it's only appropriate that I use some of my time to recognise the excellent work that people did to keep us all safe and well during this pandemic. From the NHS shop assistants, volunteers, there are too many to mention, but we all know who they are. This pandemic has brought out the best in a lot of people and I want to bring them together to say thank you. We need to support those who have suffered with their mental health too. I worry about children who are of an age where they haven't learnt to socialise with their young groups. In fact, all children and young people have suffered from not being able to socialise with friends and sometimes their families. There is so much to be done and I'm ready for the challenge. The last 18 months has been very difficult for all of us, but more so for the ones who have lost friends and family. We need to work together as a city to remember them and bring together those who need our support. My family and I are up for the challenge and we are all looking forward to working with you and making a difference in Sheffield. Thank you for this great honour. Can I call upon councillor Anne Murphy please, who will formally move that councillor Richards be appointed as Deputy Lord Mayor of Sheffield for the municipal year 2021-2022?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to formally move that my colleague councillor Shonad Mayor Richards be appointed to the Deputy Lord Mayor of Sheffield for the municipal year 2021-2022. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I call upon members of the council to vote by a show of hands. Oh, sorry, sorry. Councillor Rivers will formally second the motion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very honoured to be seconding this motion for my friend and lovely Shonad Mayor Richards to be our Deputy Lord Mayor. Thank you.
I call upon members of the City Council to vote by a show of hands. I declare that councillor Shonad Mayor Richards duly appointed and will invest the duty of Lord Mayor with a badge of office.
I'll stand up because otherwise you won't see me. I, councillor Shonad Mayor Richards, having been appointed to the office of Deputy Lord Mayor of the City of Sheffield, hereby declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code of conduct that is expected of members of the Sheffield City Council.
Thank you. I will now appoint the Lord Mayor's chaplain, Ryan Wilmun, and I will invest him with his badge of office. I want to announce the civic service that will be held at Sheffield Cathedral on Sunday the 10th of October. I now withdraw.
Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the right worshipful Lord Mayor of Sheffield, councillor Gail Smith.
If guests could please remain in their seats and lunchtime will be served to you. If you need to take a break then please just observe the social distancing rules and the flow of people. Yep.
Please be seated. Before commencing the formal items of business on the agenda, new councillors elected in the recent municipal elections will be introduced to the chamber. Welcome to the council councillor Thornton. I'm presuming that, thank you. Welcome to the council councillor Woolhouse. Welcome councillor Thornton. Homeshaw, do apologise, it's not just my eyes that don't work, it's my ears as well. Yeah, that's true. Who's next? Welcome to the council councillor Said.
David Barker as a newly returned member for Richmond Ward.
Thank you. Welcome back to the council councillor Barker, thank you. Welcome to the council councillor Milton. Welcome to the council councillor Woodcock. Welcome to the council councillor Diamond, I'm looking forward to more of that. Anybody else? Welcome to the council councillor Kubo. Welcome to the council councillor Maruwa. To introduce the new Liberal Democrat councillor for Stanington Ward, councillor Richard Williams. Welcome to the council councillor Williams.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very pleased and very proud to welcome a new and a returning councillor to this council chamber, councillor Burnett Little.
Welcome back to the council councillor Little. I think that's, that's all new councillors? One more? Sorry, I can't see you at the back. Welcome to the council councillor Whitaker. I would like now to introduce our new councillor, Lewis Chin Chen. Welcome to the council. Are there any apologies for absence from members of the council not already given in this morning as part of this meeting? Apologies? No? Item number five, to appoint a leader of the council for the municipal year 2021-2022. Are there any nominations of the council?
Terry. Line, councillor, I'm sorry about that. Councillor Terry, what's his name anyway?
Terry Fox.
That's the word I was looking for, Lord Mayor.
Is that nomination seconded? Thank you. Are there any further nominations? It has been moved and seconded that councillor Terry Fox be appointed leader of the council. All those in favour, please show hands. Any against? Any abstentions? I declare the nomination is carried and councillor Terry Fox is appointed leader of the council until the date of the next annual general meeting of the council in 2022. Item number six, executive arrangements and shadow cabinet appointments for the municipal year 2021-2022. Can I invite the new elected leader of the council, councillor Terry Fox, to announce the names of his deputy leader, the cabinet members and the cabinet advisers and his scheme declaration for discharge of executive functions? Councillor Terry Fox?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks for giving your second name right, obviously some of our party's still trying to find out who I am. First of all, Lord Mayor, I'd like to thank the people of Sheffield who have put us in this position to make these decisions today. But secondly, I'd like to thank those individuals who took part in a really robust set of talks over the last few days. They've been done in comradely fashion, they've been done in professional fashion and I'd just like to thank those for those way they conducted themselves. I'm delighted to announce, Lord Mayor, that our cooperation agreement has been duly signed today with the Green Party. This represents a new era of politics in our city. Throughout our negotiations, our priority has been one thing and one thing only, and that was to put Sheffield first. We know that this will now involve parties coming together and we are committed to making this succeed for the people of Sheffield. Now, more than ever, is a crucial time that puts Sheffield, and we've come out, as we come out of this pandemic, and more important than ever, that we provide a clear leadership that this city needs. And with that, Lord Mayor, I am obviously not only creating the executive today, but I also want to welcome on board the leadership advisers into our team as well, that'll be councillor Brian Lodge and councillor Aptis- That'll be councillor Brian Lodge and councillor Aptizam Mohammed. We are no longer separated, we are joined. We have got to make this work. Lord Mayor, we had hoped that this would have been a triangular arrangement, but unfortunately the Lib Dems couldn't or didn't want to get over the line with us. We in this agreement have left the door open, it's available at any time they want to come on board, we are waiting. I would like to thank the Greens and certainly councillor Douglas Johnson and councillor Alison Teal for the way that we were able to get this over the line. There has been some bumps. I think late Monday night, Tuesday, it looked a bit wobbly, but we were able to get that over the line. As part of our agreement, we will now form a politically proportionate executive, and the ten executive members, seven will be from Labour and three will be from the Greens. I am delighted to announce our ten-person executive to the following roles as they state below. It's fantastic, and all the way through this negotiations, without any wavering, was my new deputy leader councillor Julie Growcott, as well as the deputy leader Julie will head up our new portfolio of the community engagement and our governance. Councillor Kate McDonald will be in finance. Councillor Paul Wood will take on housing, roads and waste. Councillor Alison Teal will head up our sustainable neighbourhoods and wellbeing, parks and leisure. Councillor Douglas Johnson will head up our portfolio for climate change, environment and transport. Councillor Mazza Ikbal will head up our new portfolio called City Futures Development, Culture and Regeneration. Councillor Paul Turpin will cover the new portfolio, including the inclusive economy, jobs and skills. Councillor Jane Dunn is our cabinet member for education, children and families, and George Lindas-Hammond will continue to lead on health and social care. Lord Mayor, not only am I putting those forward, I will be speaking on the committees and the way that we're going to move forward after listening to the referendum results on moving to a committee system. I do welcome when I do move that, Lord Mayor, that we will show to the people of Sheffield that we have heard what they have said, we have taken on board seriously where they have put us, and it's now our time to act. But I ask everyone to act in politically correct fashion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can I invite the leader of the opposition councillor Shafak Mohammed to announce the names of his shadow cabinet members, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So I'd like to announce that councillor Penny Baker will continue as deputy leader and shadow councillor Julie Growcott. Councillor Martin Smith will shadow councillor Mazza Ikbal on city future development, culture and regeneration. Councillor Mohammed Marouf will shadow councillor Jane Dunn on education, children and families. Councillor Simon Clement Jones will shadow councillor Kate McDonald on finance. Councillor Steve Aries will shadow councillor George Lindas-Hammond on health and social care. And councillor Andy Sanger will shadow councillor Paul Wood on housing, roads and waste management. Councillor Tim Huggan will shadow councillor Douglas Johnson on climate change, environment and transport. Councillor Mike Leverie will shadow councillor Paul Turpin on inclusive economy, jobs and skills. And finally councillor Joe Otten will shadow councillor Alison Teal on sustainable neighbourhoods, wellbeing, parks and leisure. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
A motion to note and approve where appropriate the information provided by the two leaders has been circulated at this meeting. Can I call upon councillor Tony Dams to move the motion?
Business of no names involved, Lord Mayor. Formally move.
Can I call upon councillor Joe Otten to second the motion? Thank you. Any member wish to speak? All those in favour of the motion, please show. All those against? Are there any abstentions? Item number on this agenda, establishment of council committees in 2021/22 and the appointment of members to serve on those committees. A motion to establish and appoint members of council committees in 2021/22 has been circulated at this meeting. Could I ask the director of legal and governance to report additional names for councillors?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. For overview and scrutiny management committee, we have Denise Fox, Mick Rooney, Mark Jones, Dawn Dale, Zahira Nas and Brian Lodge. For children, young people and family support scrutiny committee, councillor Mick Rooney, Mike Chaplin, Jack Scott, Anne Murphy, Sophie Wilson and Sophia Said. For the healthier communities and adult social care scrutiny, councillors Gary Weatherall, Neil Gibson, Talib Hussain, Francine Johnson, Jackie Sittur, Aptizam Mohammed. The substitute members are councillor Anne Murphy, Seanad Myer Richards, Diane Hurst, Peter Price and Abdul Khayyum. For the planning and highways committee, the additional members are councillors Diane Hurst, Peter Price, Gary Weatherall, Chris Rosling-Josephs, Zahira Nas and Tony Dams. And the substitute members are councillors Alan Law, Mike Chaplin, Anne Murphy, Tony Downing and Sophia Said. The licensing committee additional members are councillors Karen McGowan, David Barker, Dawn Dale, Seanad Myer Richards, Josie Pazcek, Mick Rooney, Ruth Milsom, Neil Gibson. And a substitute on the South Yorkshire Pensions Authority, councillor Chris Rosling-Josephs will replace Jackie Sittur. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can I call upon councillor Terry Fox to move the motion, please? Oh, sorry. Yes, councillor.
Late, and so there's some mix-up with the names we gave in. But on the overview and scrutiny management committee, our names are Penny Baker, Mike Leverie, Steve Aries and... I've written Mike Leverie twice. Tim Huggan. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Can I call upon councillor Terry Fox to move the motion, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, following the results of the governance referendum, this is the last year of the cabinet model. Cabinet members will be asked this year to go into the departure lounge to look at how they transition those powers down into those new committees. I don't underestimate the work that's going to go on into these transition committees and the work that these chairs, vice-chairs and members are going to have to put in. We're piloting the introduction of the committee system to trial our work in the committees to help develop the new model. This will allow us to learn what will work and what doesn't work when we come to roll out the full system this time next year. I really do wish the members well as they go into a new way of working. We are also, and I am proud to say that we are going to pilot joint working with councillor Dawn Dale and councillor Zahira Nas. I really do wish them well on trying to get this through. It is a complete new way of working, it's something that is long overdue in this council, and hopefully we can show that we can do this together. It will also be that we adapt the way the council works to fit in with this new political way of working in the council. The committees will consider policy developments as well as discussing items before they are brought through to the cabinet, so we will get a broader range of elected members' views which can be fed in before this decision is finally made. Crucially, they will provide a link for the new formed area committees that will be able to push up nominations, recommendations and also take them back. We will look to embed this model at the heart of how this council operates. We're hoping and wishing councillor Mary Lee well, who is not able to attend today, but as she undertakes that real piece of work as we look at how we devolve budgets and powers down to local communities. Lord Mayor, the committees will receive and review reports and recommendations from the local area committees. They will have regard to the outcome of the consultation carried out by those area committees on matters under consideration by the transitional committee. This is obviously a brand-new way of working. I will ask people not to think about this year, but think about next year, because that will be the way of working going forward. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Fox. Can I now ask councillor Tony Dams to second the motion?
Formally second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dams. Does any other member wish to speak? All those in favour of the motion, please show. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Item number eight, appoints the council panels, groups etc and to external bodies for 2021/22. A motion to establish and appoint to the council panels, groups etc and to appoint to external bodies in 2021/22 has been circulated at this meeting. I call upon councillor Tony Dams to move the motion.
Formally move, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dams. Can I call upon councillor Diane Hurst to second the motion?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? No. All those in favour of the motion, please show. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Item number nine, arrangements for council meetings... Sorry about that. Item number nine, arrangements for council meetings in 2021/22. A motion to note minor changes made to council procedure rules relating to the venue for the annual meeting of the council and to agree the dates of the meetings of the council in the municipal year 21/22 and the formula for the order of which notice of motions will be listed on the council summons has been circulated at this meeting. Can I call upon councillor Dams to move the motion?
Formally move, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can I call upon councillor Diane Hurst to second the motion?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour, please show your hands. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Item number 10, Sheffield City Council Governance Referendum. The item of business is to approve the recommendations in the report of the director of legal and governance on the results of Sheffield City Council's governance referendum. The report has been circulated to all members of the council and published on the website on Friday 14th of May. The motion to a) note the outcome of the governance referendum, b) resolve to cease to operate executive arrangements and start to operate a committed system of governance with effect from the start of 2022/23 municipal year, and request the director of legal and governance to take all the necessary steps in consequence of the referendum result, as an outline in the report, is to be moved by councillor Terry Fox and seconded by... I'm not sure which councillor is seconding this. Is it councillor Growcott? Thank you. Councillor Terry Fox?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just two quick points. I'd like to say a big thank you to all who was involved in the campaign, for all those who took part in the referendum. The message is loud and clear, and we are on our way to enacting what has been requested. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Growcott? Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour of the motion, please show. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Item number 11, Members Allowances, Report of the independent remuneration panel. The item of business is to approve the recommendations in this report of the executive director of resource on the recommendations from the council's independent referendum panel, remuneration panel on the Members Allowances scheme. One of the recommendations is to approve and removal of the Special Responsibility Allowance, SRA, for local area partnership chairs and the addition of SRA for local area committee chairs. The report was published with the agenda of this meeting. The motion to be approved, the four recommendations in the report, is to be moved by councillor Terry Fox and seconded by councillor Julie Growcott.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In formally moving this, I will like to put on record that we will be asking again the independent panel to come back with more recommendations as we move to them new systems and as quickly as possible. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Growcott? Thank you. Councillor Fox, did you wish to speak? No?
No.
Okay.
Formally.
Does any other further members wish to speak? No? All those in favour of the motion, please show. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. This concludes the business of the annual general meeting of the council, the first meetings of the council's committee will follow, at which the chairs will be appointed and the frequencies of their meetings will be agreed. This one? May I remind members that only the members of the body concerned can speak and vote on the motion relating to that body. Meeting number one, Cabinet. It is to be formally moved by councillor Terry Fox and formally seconded by councillor Julie Growcott that meeting of the cabinet be held on a monthly basis on Wednesdays at two o'clock on the date set out in this agenda for this meeting. Expect the meeting on the 26th of May 2021, which has been cancelled. Councillor Terry Fox?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Growcott?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of the cabinet wish to speak? All those in favour of the motion, please show. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number two, Cabinet Highways Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Julie Growcott and formally seconded by councillor Mazza Ikbal that councillor Paul Wood be appointed chair of the Cabinet Highways Committee and meetings of the committee be held as and when required on dates and times to be determined by the chair. Councillor Growcott?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Mazarickbal? Thank you. Councillor Growcott? You've done that, sorry, I do apologise. Does any member of the committee wish to speak? All those in favour, please show. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number three Overview and Scrutiny Management Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Mike Rooney and formally seconded by councillor Mark Jones that councillor Denise Fox be appointed Chair of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Committee and b the meetings of the committee be held on a quarterly basis on dates and times to be determined by the Chair and as and when required to be called in items. Councillor Rooney?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Rooney. Councillor Mark Jones?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Does any member of the committee wish to speak? All those in favour of the motion, please show. Any against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number four Children, Young People and Family Support, Scrutiny and Policy Development Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Mike Chaplin and formally seconded by councillor Jack Scott that councillor Mike Rooney be appointed Chair of the Children and Young People's Family Support, Scrutiny and Policy Development Committee and meetings of the committee be held on a bi-monthly basis on dates and times to be determined by the Chair as and when. For calling items. Councillor Chaplin?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Scott?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour, please show. Any against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number five is withdrawn from consideration. Meeting number six Health, Community and Adult Social Care Scrutiny and Policy Development Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Penny Baker and formally seconded by councillor Sue Auckland that councillor Steve Aries be appointed Chair to the Health, Community and Adult Social Care Scrutiny and Policy Development Committee and meetings to be held bi-monthly based on dates and times to be determined by the Chair as and when required for our calling items. Councillor Baker?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Auckland?
Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number seven is withdrawn from consideration. Meeting number eight Planning and Highways Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Gary Weatherall and formally seconded by councillor Chris Roslin-Josephs. Councillor Diane Hurst and Peter Price to be appointed joint chairs of the Planning and Highways Committee and the meetings of the committee be held at 2 o'clock on Tuesday 25th of May 2021 and every three weeks thereafter on the date set out in the agenda circulated today. Councillor Weatherall?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Chris Roslin-Josephs?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour, please show hands. Any... Sorry. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number nine Licensing Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Pashak and formally seconded by councillor Mike Rooney. Councillor David Baker and councillor Karen McGowan be appointed joint chairs of the Licensing Committee. Meeting of the committee or subcommittee be held on Monday and Tuesday in the week, either 10 o'clock or 2 o'clock as determined by the Chair. Councillor Pashak?
Thank you.
Councillor Rooney?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour of the motion, please show. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number 10 Central Local Area Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Martin Phipps and formally seconded by councillor Douglas Johnson that councillor Ruth...
Messero.
Sorry. Messero, and I do apologise. Be appointed Chair of the Central Local Area Committee and the meeting of the committee be held at least four times a year per year on dates and times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Phipps?
Formally moved.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of the committee wish to speak? All those in favour, please... Sorry, all those in favour of the motion, please show. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number 11 East Local Area Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Terry Fox and formally seconded by councillor Diane Hurst that councillor Mary Lee be appointed Chair and councillor Anne Murphy be appointed Deputy Chair of the East Local Area Committee and the meetings of the committee be held at least four times per year on dates and times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Fox?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hurst?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour? Please raise your hands. All those against? Any abstentions? Meeting number 11 North Local Area Committee. It has been formally moved by councillor Penny Baker and formally seconded by councillor Mike Leveritt that councillor Alan Hooper be appointed Chair of the North Local Area Committee and the meetings of the committee be held at least four times per year on dates and times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Baker?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Leveritt?
Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour, please show. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number 13 North East Local Area Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Tony Dams and formally seconded by councillor Jane Dunn that... Not yet, councillor, just a minute.
I've got the names written down here, I don't want to forget them.
I've got a portrait piece here, Tona. That councillor Garrett Weatherall be appointed Chair and councillor Tabass Hussain be appointed Deputy Chair of the North East Local Area Committee and the meetings of the committee be held at least four times per year on the dates and times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Dams?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour? Thank you. The motion is carried. Meeting number 14 South Local Area Committee. It is to be formally moved that councillor Ian Auckland and formally seconded by councillor Sue Auckland that councillor Simon Clement Jones be appointed Chair of the South Area Local Area Committee and the meetings of the committee be held at least four times per year on dates and times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Ian Auckland?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Sue Auckland?
Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour, please show. Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number 15 South Area Local Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Brian Lodge and formally seconded by councillor Mike Rooney that councillor Tony Dowling be appointed the Chair and councillor Chris Roslin-Josephs be appointed Deputy Chair of the South East Local Area Committee and the meeting of the committee be held at least four times per year on dates and times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Lodge?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Rooney?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour? Any abstentions? All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number 16 Southwest Local Area Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Joe Otten and formally seconded by councillor Colin Ross that councillor Andrew Sangha be appointed Chair of the Southwest Local Area Committee and the meetings of the committee be held at least four times per year on dates and times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Otten?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Ross?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of the committee wish to speak? All those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number 17 Audit and Standards Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Diane Hurst and formally seconded by councillor Pashak that councillor Sinad Meier Richards... I hope I got that right. I'll get used to it. You'll have to teach me. Be appointed Chair of the Audit and Standards Committee and the meeting of the committee be held on Thursday 10th of June and 29th of July at 5pm and thereafter on dates, times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Hurst?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Pashak?
Thank you.
Does any member of the committee wish to speak? All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number 18 Admissions Committee. It is to be formally moved by councillor Sinad Meier Richards and formally seconded by councillor Hussain that councillor Chris Roslin-Josephs be appointed Chair of the Admissions Committee and the meetings of the committee be held at monthly basis on dates and times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Richards?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hussain?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of the committee wish to speak? All those in favour, please show. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Meeting number 19 Senior Officer Employment Committee. It is to be formally moved that councillor Julie Growcott and formally seconded by councillor Jane Dunn that councillor Terry Fox be appointed Chair of the Senior Officer Employment Committee and the meetings of the committee be held as and when required on dates and times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Growcott?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Dunn?
Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak? All those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. We're nearly there, folks. Meeting number 20 Appeals and Collective Disputes Committee. This is to be formally moved by councillor Gary Weatherall and formally seconded by councillor Denise Fox that councillor Tony Dams be appointed Chair of Appeals and Collective Disputes Committee and meetings of the committee be held as and when required on dates and times to be determined by the Chair. Councillor Weatherall?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of the committee wish to speak? All those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. This concludes today's business. Thank you all for your attendance. Stay safe and please can I remind you of the need to maintain social distancing while departing the venue. Thank you and good afternoon. Oh, wait. Tribute. No, we're not doing that. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your patience.